Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. Council members, at this time, would you please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Curtis Edmonds? And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Gracious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for all the bridges we had to cross, stop signs we have to stop at, conversations we were involved. Now, Lord, as we come to take care of the business of our city, we ask that you guide and season our tongue, God, that we will say the things that are relevant and not disrespectful. We thank you in advance. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Six members of City Council present.
All right, thank you. Madam, members of City Council, you had before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of September the 13th, 2016, a regular meeting of September the 13th, 2016, and a call meeting on September the 19th, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted six zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Unfinished business, 16-283, use permit rezoning and code amendment, item B. Resolution granting the request of Benjamin Washington of Home Builders, Inc. for a use permit to build a three-unit townhouse at 601 Jamestown Avenue. U.P. 1609, first reading vote, six one, approved. Vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay. Whitaker and Moody?
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. Item C, ordinance granting the request of Eric Shirey with NVR, Inc. and Ryan Holmes to amend the proffered conditions for Acton Green located on the former site of Craddock High School at 4300 George Washington Highway, which is zoned, urban residential master plan overlay with conditions UR MPOK and contains approximately 40.6 acres. Z 1601, first reading vote, six zero, approved. Vision principle: a robust and prospering economy. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Okay. I think from this item here, we were looking for a follow-up from someone from PRHA as to where we were with, as far as timelines. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
We conditionally approved it six oh with the hope that tonight that we would get some kind of affirmation as to where we are in this process and just how aggressive this new transaction is going to be so we can get this development done. Is there somebody here to speak to that?
Mayor, I believe that there are planning commission members here, Mr. Baldwin, and I believe there is a representative to talk about the proposed timeline in terms of going forward.
Yes, Mr. Shirey is here from Ryan Holmes, as is Brian Donahue with PRHA.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager and City Attorney. It's good to see you again this evening. Since your last meeting, we have had some engagements with the City Manager and City Attorneys and their staff. We do have some updates for you tonight. Eric Shirey with Ryan Holmes is also here to provide you an update on their schedule for development. I think one of the items you had asked for an update on at this meeting was a purchase agreement, which we have received a copy of. I believe that may have been circulated as well to city staff. There is a purchase agreement for the property that was executed between the developer and the current owner of Craddock Properties. The targeted closing date for the conveyance of property is currently December 23rd. At your last meeting, we did speak about a...
December 23rd?
That's correct. We did discuss a deadline for the current agreement with the current owner of December 8th. That still stands, and we would expect that following that date, the property conveyance and transfer would happen to the new owner and developer.
Okay. Now, I think we are... One of my specific concerns, and I won't go through all this again tonight, but we have been down this road with this property for the last six years with two developers, and now you're going to be number three. And we're looking for, and a schedule, an accurate schedule, I don't want an aggressive schedule, but we need to start putting the infrastructure in and building those houses. The public and everybody else has been waiting, and this council has been waiting patiently. And so can somebody speak to that? Where are you at with your schedule? Once you close on the 23rd, when are we putting a shovel in the ground?
Absolutely, and thank you. We... If I could just run you out through the critical path and through next year, just let me know if I'm providing too much detail. But as you know, closing on the property targeted date December 23rd, and that's actually a deadline in the contract, so I shouldn't say targeted date. We are going to be working with planning immediately after this rezoning to have our plans amended. We have a goal to have that completed by the end of the year. We'll be working with Bob and his team through that.
When you say plans, you mean the properties, we're going from 200 homes to 170, or that phase has already been done?
No, that's right. The 200 to the 172 lots. So there's some infrastructure, storm drainage, sewage lines, those have all changed a little bit, so we'll be running that through the planning department upon their final approval.
But that's not a real issue, Bob, as far as timeline on our part?
No, sir. We think because it's been previously approved, it's a minor change.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Very good. Upon that final approval, we'll be breaking ground immediately, so we anticipate that being in the January timeframe. Being in the wet season, the development, to have the first 37 or Phase 1, the first 37 lots recorded will take approximately five months. That could be six, again, because it is the rainy season, putting us halfway into the summer. Once recorded, Ryan Holmes as the builder will start immediately as well. We're not wasting any time. That build is a 60 to 90-day build to get our model up and started. When we have a certificate of occupancy on that, we'll fill it, start selling and doing business out of the model home. And our first quarter takedown from the... Those who we've hired to do the infrastructure and put the lots on the ground, start that fall and into the winter. So we will be selling, I would say, about the September timeframe, open for sales under operations in Acton Green.
Okay. And, good, thank you very much for that. That's encouraging. Let me ask one other thing, and maybe this is to our attorney, with the current extension that's in place, and this extension expires with this current developer, when does that expire? December?
The critical date that the council has mentioned is December 8th.
Okay, so December the 8th, and you're not closing until then. So prior to him closing, we need to grant another extension, or do we stand down and wait until this has occurred? Or do you have some stipulation that you won't close unless you get some time extension? Is any of that language being discussed? "I don't want delays, I don't want delays on our part, and I don't want you to come back, you're waiting on us, you're waiting on Bob. We're ready to build," right? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor and council members, the initial discussion was to put this, for lack of a better word, on dual track so that contingent upon conveyance, but go ahead and have everybody involved establish those relationships with the new developer while holding with regard to the current agreement we have and making that switch as necessary. So we wouldn't tie both hands together, but we would have that small 30 days of overlap.
Okay, got it. Good. Thank you. All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the investment, and hopefully Ryan Holmes will get this across the finish line. It's been six years in coming. Mayor, my question is, do we have protection regarding a revert or a clawback? As we know, things happen in the development business and with the economy and what have you. At what point are we assured that if something does happen, that this property remains in the hands of the city?
Mr. Attorney, if you want to take a stab at that, I think that's the reason why we've got it broken up into four phases, and we still, the city, own two of the phases, and he's got rights to run with two. And as he starts building, we'll start transferring more over. Is that correct?
That's all built into the development agreement. That's correct.
That's built into the agreement.
So if nothing happens beyond the development deadline, we're protected on all the phases. I'm interested in all the phases. That property...
We are synchronizing the agreement such that we do not lose any rights with regard to the current owner or the future owner until we have satisfaction that we're going to move forward. You should be hearing at a later date about the timetable and a development agreement with protections for the new owner on conveyance, as well as we're holding where we are with regard to the current owner.
And your deal with the current owner, is that been inked?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, very good. And welcome to Portsmouth.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have no speakers, and we're in need of a motion.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
All right, go get them.
This item is adopted six zero. Item E, ordinance granted the request... Oh, okay. Ordinance granted the request of the City of Portsmouth to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to waste-related services, including the definitions, use types, use table, and standards of ordinance to address transfer station facilities and construction demolition debris landfills. These uses would be allowed in the industrial district only after obtaining a use permit from City Council. These amendments would not apply to any existing facilities and are necessary in anticipation of changes in the regional solid waste services in Portsmouth. C 8, 1601, first reading vote, seven oh, approved. Vision principle: a robust and prospering economy. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted five to one. 16-283, rezoning, item D, Z 1603, uptown. Roland Carpenter of Get It Industrial Marine, LLC is requesting that the regulating plan for the D 2 Form-Based Code area be changed from townhouse, small apartment frontage to workshop frontage for the properties located at 1609, 1613, and 1617 County Street, and 1622 and 1624 Columbia Street. The purpose of this request is to allow for the operation of a contractor's office in an existing vacant building. The comprehensive plans, generalized future land use map, recommends mixed-use development on the parcel. The parcel's total approximately .7 acres. Deferred from the September 13, 2016 City Council meeting, vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods, electronic roll call, and I have registered speakers. Our first speaker...
Bob.
Oh, sorry, Bob. You can...
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council. I just want to give you a quick update from the last council meeting, and I'll be brief on this. I think you're familiar with the request by the applicant to use this building as a contractor's office. It is in our D 2 Form-Based Code area, and there were a couple of concerns that were raised, primarily about any potential impact of the change of the regulating plan on the churches across the street and on the social services building that's next door there. And as is included in your packet, we did take a look at that. And basically to summarize our findings, we don't believe that the change in the regulating plan would have any significant impact on the uses for either site. The only land use issue really would be that the church would lose the ability to have a daycare center affiliated with the church. I do understand from talking to the applicant, there is a representative of the church here this evening, and they have no objections to that, to this change as far as the church's concerned. So that was one thing. The second thing that was a question was about the impact of the design. We know that the design goes with the regulating plan format. There would be a slight change in the regulating plan design, for example, in the social services side. It wouldn't impact the use, but it might change the appearance of the building a little bit, should there be a new construction added on that piece of property affected by the regulating plan change. And that's basically it. Be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, so it sounds like we've uncovered all the bases. Any other question, discussion? Yeah, Dr. Edmonds?
He said there's a member of the church here. Would they stand? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments here on this issue? Because I think we talked to this one last time pretty detailed, and we had those outstanding issues...
Those two items.
And those items are resolved. So any other discussion? Okay. We've got speakers here that are in support, and I think we're in support of moving on this item, and I'd hate for you to come up and speak in hurtsis of... Nobody wants to speak. Thank you.
Yes, he does.
All right, there you go.
Let it be.
To the distinguished mayor, doctors, and council, I just wanted to go on record and let you know that at the...
Excuse me, sir. Could you give your name?
Yes, my name is Roland Carpenter, President and Chief Executive Officer of G. I. Industrial Marine. I didn't let you know last week, but it was brought up, that at the outset of us looking for a building, we did go to economic development, and they did reach out to us with five properties. We looked at each of those properties, and those were not as suitable as this one here. I just wanted to say that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero.
All right, good. And thank you for following up, Mr. Baldwin.
City Managers Report, 16-303, adoption of an ordinance to transfer $596,677 from the judicial category of the FY 2017 general fund budget to the non-departmental category of the FY 2017 general fund budget. Vision principle: efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
I have a file for you. Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 16-303 is a command order to transfer $596,677 from the judicial category from this year's budget to go into the general fund budget for the non-departmental category. Why is the City Manager requesting approximately $600,000 from the judicial category? What is the judicial department going to have to cut to deal with the decrease in their budget? Where is this money going to in the general fund? The city, which is the people's city, elected servants to be good stewards of our assets. We, the people, don't have as many assets as other cities because we have almost $71 million in lost revenue from taxes and real estate properties. Let's look at history of poor stewardship in the 2012-13 budget. The city borrowed about $168 million to strengthen its underfunded pension system, and the pension bond cost still had to be paid. In the 2014-15 financial audit, there was 1.8 million deficit in the city's golf fund. With the debt and interest, it added up to 7.2 million. In the same year, 801 Water Street and 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard properties were taken off the tax rolls. These properties purchases were unbudgeted expense. 801 Water Street was purchased for 2.8 million. Where was that money come from? 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard was reported to have been purchased for 3.75 million dollars. This property was taken... Was given to the city as a gift, so where is this 3.75 million dollars? So far, the renovations could cost 25 million. During this budget cycle, Parks and Rec overspent its budget by $151,000. In budget proposals for 2015-16, the budget had a shortfall of $11.7 million between revenues and expenses. In March, the Virginia pilot wrote that Portsmouth is looking at a four to six million-dollar gap in our 2016-17 budget. 16-303 is a command order to transfer about $600,000 from the judicial category for this year's budget to go into the general fund budget for non-departmental category. When is this hidden agenda going to come to the light? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. Just for purposes of general public certification, if you would click through on your agenda on this item, the... On the City Managers Report discusses the purpose of the transfer of this money, and the purpose is that subsequent to the adoption of the city budget in May 10th of this year, the State Compensation Board eliminated funding for 13 state-funded deputy positions at the Portsmouth City Jail. They did similar reductions in Norfolk, Gloucester, Lynchburg, and Richmond. Because of this, this money can't stay, and that allocation cannot stay under the judicial category, and therefore, because of the reduction, it has to be put back in the general fund and can be used elsewhere. That's the reason for the transfer, and that's where the money comes from.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-304, adoption of an ordinance appropriating $43,290,29 by classification to implement the operating budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools for the second quarter of fiscal year 2017. Vision principle: efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. You'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-305, adoption of an ordinance to accept $52,777 in emergency services initiative funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and to appropriate said amount in the FY 2017 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund budget for use in furtherance of reducing the civism rate of adults admitted to Eastern State Hospital and expediting the discharge of individuals from geriatric programs at Eastern State Hospital. Vision principle: enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-306, adoption of an ordinance accepting $1,910 of program to assist in the transition from homeless funding received through the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to assist with homeless transition services. Vision principle: enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-307, adoption of an ordinance accepting $1,671.56 of funding received from Health Planning Region 5 Regional Suicide Task Force and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to provide incentive education and materials related to suicide prevention. Vision principle: enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-308, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $43,035 from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter driving under the influence of alcohol. Vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-309, adoption of an ordinance accepting an Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $74,198 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund to provide funding for various items, including the geographical policing program, the Circuit Court Drug Court Program, and police equipment. Vision principles: innovation and change, sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Chair? Uh, wait. Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna put this thing in just as my wife was an employee of the drug court.
All right, well noted. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have a motion.
Is there a second?
And a second, and you're voting electronically. It's adopted five zero with one abstention. Six... 16-310, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $6,958 from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the police department to increase usage of occupant restraints in vehicles. Vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-311, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $6,958 from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Safety Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter speeding. Vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. New Business, 16-312, boards and commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
No report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 16-313, items submitted by council members, adoption of a resolution authorizing the settlement of claims by and against South Norfolk-Jordan Bridge, LLC. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted five to one. Any other items?
Yeah, let me real briefly, because the hour is late, I wanna, first of all, I think I failed to mention last month, and it was on television, the announcement of the new company that we have moving downtown Portsmouth, Copper and Oats Craft Spirits. They'll be in the old furniture building, which is now Montgomery Square, that's been operated by the Breeding Company, so we want to welcome them to Portsmouth and wish them well. And secondly, on Friday, the thirtieth, we're going to have a grand occasion here with LaShawn Merritt. We're gonna proclaim this his day in the city of Portsmouth, and we got quite a few activities. Some of them are not open to the public, which there's a wall unveiling at the school, but at five-thirty, there's gonna be a parade for LaShawn, and it's gonna start at Godwin Street, well, and High Street at that corner where Third Baptist Church is, and it will end at IC Norcom, the Joe Langston Stadium. And then after that, the game, IC Norcom and Woodrow Wilson are playing each other. You have to buy a ticket to enter, and at halftime, we will present the keys to the city to Mr. Merritt, and I heard Dr. Patton down there, let me let you chime in. I didn't say something wrong, or you just?
Oh, no, Mr., Mr.
You've got a gold medal, too? You got it yet? Okay. You're working on it, but right, right.
Excuse me, ma'am, Mr. Cherry was asking me a question, and I informed him that you all have already gotten your tickets.
Oh, okay, yeah, we have. So, come out on the Friday, the thirtieth, for the parade at five-thirty, and by all means, come to the game, and we want to give this hometown hero a well-deserved congratulations and thank him for all of his accomplishments. With that, Vice Mayor Simmons.
Yes, sir, just one other item for this Thursday, the twenty-ninth, is the last Thursday concert in the series we've had all summer at Portside, and it is the Last Blast Block Party. And that's from six-thirty to eight-thirty at what we used to call Portside at the harbor at North Landing. And...
Who's the band?
Ten-somebody.
All right.
I'm not getting the hand signals, but anyway.
My favorite.
It's a great band, and the first fifty guests will receive complimentary Sunset Thursday sunglasses.
All right.
And thank goodness it won't be raining, and you'll need sunglasses.
All right, good deal.
That's it, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Sixteen dash three fourteen, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. Sixteen dash three fifteen, non-agenda speakers, our first speaker is Mr. Barry Randall. Can you see here? Nope? Okay. Mr. Mark Godolda-Gutrowski.
And as he's coming up to take the mic, let me just remind the public, we had an extensive work session today, and part of that was dealing with the women and minority-owned business study, the plan that we're trying to develop to put in place, and I would encourage all of you to go online and look at that discussion, but we have nailed down the finer points of that, and we're hoping, Mr. Attorney, by next meeting, to be voting on the policy to put that in place, which will be first for this history of this city, to undertake a program of inclusion and dealing with women, minorities, and others, to try to make sure everyone in this city and within this region that want to bid on work in Portsmouth gets a fair shot. So with that, Mr. Gutrowski, good evening, sir.
Good evening, council and fellow citizens. On social media over the weekend, I encountered a video that a fellow candidate for city council posted. I would not be remarking on this here, except that the mayor was the co-star of that production. And the fellow candidate made an assertion that disturbed me greatly. He said of the mayor, when he took over the city, when he took over, the city was almost bankrupt. Now the city has a fifty-four million dollar surplus. Well, ladies and gentlemen, over the past twenty years, I have attended more meetings of city council than any other single individual, including members of council. And I know I did not sleep through the year 2010. At no time during that year did anybody in an official capacity assert that the city of Portsmouth was nearly bankrupt. But I do not, at this age, want to rely on my memory alone, so I went back through a set of comprehensive annual financial reports that the city and I store. I went back to 2008. In 2008, the unrestricted fund balance was twenty-six million dollars. In 2010, that is to say fiscal year 2010, which ended four months before Mayor Wright took his seat, the unrestricted fund balance was forty-five million dollars. In 2011, the unrestricted fund balance was forty-two million dollars. So if this constitutes being on the verge of bankruptcy, I'm not sure what measures the fellow council candidate was using. He also said, oh, and I should say, that as of the end of fiscal year 2015, the unassigned fund balance was fifty-four million dollars. So that assertion was irresponsible. And what bothers me more than an uninformed council candidate making an assertion that's false is that the mayor, who was in the frame for the entirety of the video, did not make any disclaimer about it, and the mayor knows better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Gutrowski, you've also attended just about all of the council meetings, and I know there have been several citizens who have come before the mic and have made statements suggesting that our city, because of its present leadership on council, is heading towards bankruptcy. Matter of fact, we've been characterized as Detroit, which has some underlying meaning in and of itself. And if you're gonna be critical of the mayor, I have yet to hear you come up to the mic and challenge them for making those type of statements.
I'm happy to speak to that, council member. We citizens are rationed in terms of our appearances here. If we speak non-agenda, we cannot speak on agenda items. Typically, I speak on agenda items, which rules out my speaking non-agenda. And when I do speak non-agenda, it depends on what is the most critical issue. I have found that you, in particular, are very good at refuting irresponsible comments that come from the citizens, and so I thank you for doing that, because it's important that when people say things that are incorrect, that somebody set the record straight. Thank you.
Good night, sir. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Linda Artis.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of the citizens of the Prentice Park, Prentice Place community, and the New Virginia Majority Organization. We are organization that is dealing with the flooding issues that is facing the city of Portsmouth, of course, is facing the whole Hampton Roads area, but we are dealing with Portsmouth in particular. We've started, we have a grassroots organization that, of community, of the residents, and what we have here tonight is a snapshot of just a small area in our canvassing and questioning the communities and with their concern about the flooding. Besides the comprehensive flood plan, the biggest problem that residents in those communities have right now is the flooding itself. Of course, they have always faced flooding, but since Portsmouth, four years ago, did that construction during the, making the sidewalk handicap accessible, they took out a lot of the flood drains. And the residents said, as a matter of fact, when they were doing it, the person that was in charge of the construction, they came and told the residents that Portsmouth did not put it in their contract, and they weren't gonna be putting it back. And ever since then, any kind of rain, it wreaks havoc over there. Right here, it's just a snapshot of, we only get three major streets over there in the Prentice Park, Prentice Place area, Duke Street, Randolph Street, Arlington Street, from Chestnut Street to Decree Boulevard. What you're looking at is the red, all of the red signifies where they took the drains out of there, off of those corners. The yellow represents the ones that don't have any drains at all, and the blue are the only ones that have drains. And when we were doing, when we were doing that research, we have photos where the blue, the ones that do have, it was eight drains that was inaccessible on that particular day. We also have, we've also collected over three hundred petitions, signatures from the residents asking for help and giving us some answers to what's going to be done about it. We have been down here, and we have emailed, we have called. The people funding organization from out of Alexandria has even been to the city hall, and no one has, we hasn't got any response from no one, from no office. So we're here tonight asking what, when are the cities going, when is the city going to put the drains back? And first and foremost, we would like a person that we can maybe talk to, and that's why we're here now, because we haven't been able to get to talk to nobody.
Ms. Artis, we have someone that would be more than happy to speak with you tonight before you leave here, and we can get more in detail to that. That is very thorough, I don't know from an accuracy standpoint, but it appears that you've done right much research in that area. And Madam Manager, if we could have, is it Mr. Baldwin?
Um, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, I had an update in regard to 318 Brighton Street. Is that in your Prentice Park area?
Three eighteen.
Three, 319 Brighton Street, of which we've had staff working with citizens for approximately the past two weeks, and in fact, today, they completed a service area, which it was delayed, the cleaning of it, because I was going to share with council with this just recent Julia remnants of the storm. Our area, over a seventy-two hour period, received seventeen inches of rain, and Portsmouth in particular received nine point eight inch, eleven point eight inches of rain, and across the city, that, the region, that much. So as we indicated in our last city council meeting, as a question asked by Dr. Whitaker, we have been cleaning drains all over the city. We're gonna continue to clean drains. Public Utilities Director just indicated that there will be issuing a notice to proceed with Todd Water Utility to be in a sanitary sewer and water rehabilitation project in your area, and that would also include full pavement restoration to, that will improve drainage in the area. But she indicated that drainage in the project area is by surface draining, and that there are very few pipes or catch basins in the area. Now, that is something that I will get with Mrs. Tremere and the engineer to see, for her to point that out, that is something that is probably creating some additional flooding issues.
Okay.
But Mrs. Ho will get your information. Someone will meet with you as early as this week. Look at your chart that you presented, and we try to be responsive to any citizen that reaches out to us, and this was the report. They also addressed 1718 LaSalle Avenue today. So we will, Mrs. Ho, could you raise your hand, Ms. Ho? So she will get your information. You'll have someone talking with you tomorrow. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And the crux of my question was because if, if what you have there is accurate, it implies a design flaw of some sort, and that's why I wanted to make sure that our engineers and our utility folks looked at that and see if that is accurate, and if we have in fact done that. So ma'am, thank you, Ms. Artis, for that, and we'll begin with you. Good day. Oh, Mr. Cherry?
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you. You kind of hit on my points, but if I'm looking at that right, is that top street, Lincoln? Is that Lincoln? Right.
This is Chestnut.
Okay, what's the street coming off that, at the top, coming this way, coming down? What's that?
This is Duke Street here, this is Randolph Street here, and this is Lincoln Street here.
So there's no drains?
Wherever you see the red and the yellow, there's no drains. The red is where the drains were taken from, the yellow, it doesn't have any drains there. And that's 39 block radius, and even, not even the storm like we had this last weekend, just raining, just plain raining. My daughter lost her automobile in that last storm, like on South Street.
Yep, yep, thank you. We gotta look at that, that, ma'am, if that's accurate, we, that's, because there's zero drains, I'm looking if your chart is right.
Yeah, in this area, it was only twenty percent of the area, so the drainage drain is eighty percent. That's enough.
So we can get a report on that, like, soon?
Post haste. All right, Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I was just asking that we get an update, council meeting, Mr. Cherry?
We can give an update.
All right. Now, is that your work, Ms. Artis?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
I don't, my apologies.
Okay, I want to applaud you and commend you. This is how to get council's attention. We like colors. Thank you, ma'am, good night.
Ms. June Cross.
Good afternoon, all of the city council mail. I am June Cross. I live on 1718 LaSalle Avenue. I've lived there for four to five years, and we have not had the problem that we have been having in the last four years. It, because my street flooded, the end of my street floods, I have water in front of my driveway where I didn't have until they paved the street and closed the drain. And it's really hard. It's hard for us getting out, it's hard for us getting in of our street, and we need something done. We need help. So please, we ask them for help, if you all can help us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, can you tell?
Yeah, hold on. You say they closed the drain, so there was one on your street.
It was the drains, it had been on my street because of, I didn't have a problem with the water.
Okay, I was just asking, did you see it? You say they closed it.
Right.
I just want, okay, thank you.
Because when the people were doing the construction, they told us, you all are having drains closed, and I want to know why. He said, you all gonna have problem. The people that were doing the construction. I did call downtown, and they said it was not in the plan, so that's what was saying.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. We got it. Yep. Dr. Patton?
Yes, sir. Mayor, just wanted to read what staff has placed regarding our citizens' property, 1718. Public Works received a call on 919 for flooding in the vicinity of LaSalle Avenue and Lincoln Street. A superintendent visited the site and found that a valley gutter had deteriorated and was creating a drainage flow problem. Since it is a part of the Public Utilities Prentice Park project, which I just shared with you, that's about to begin or be bid, that is getting ready to start, this site will be included in that project. In addition, 1718 LaSalle Avenue is a part of the same project. So both the Brighton Street and the LaSalle Street are a part of the project that's getting ready to be done.
Okay. But still, let's not let that take away from that diagram we just saw that showed Duke Street and Lincoln Street with an abundance of, lack of drainage pieces at each one of those intersections. Ms. Cross, you say you've been there forty-seven years, forty-five, and you've never experienced this type of flooding until the last, since we made the renovations out there. Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, ma'am. While we're discussing flooding, I know we've had, and I think all the members, communication from a couple of citizens on Yorktown adjacent to the Behavioral Health Services Building. from a couple of citizens on Yorktown adjacent to the Behavioral Health Services Building. I think that was due to a new paving road project, and was directing the water away from the drainage. Is that in the process of being corrected as well?
It is under review.
Cut your mic off. Dr. Pat?
The citizen that reported that on the same week after the meeting that went out to visit and examine, there is a report on it. I cannot recall exactly what the report back is, but you will get a copy of it tomorrow of what their findings were. That's contributing to that issue.
Right. Thanks.
If I'm not mistaken, I thought that was a runoff issue?
Yes, that's what...
And it was going to their property and away from where the drain was installed?
Correct.
And did she make a statement that the drain was at the high point?
That is what the citizen said, but I'll get the report to you tomorrow.
Please, thank you. All right, Dr. Whitaker.
Dr. Patton, the Prentice Park, you said Public Utilities Project, is that what it's called? Did you say that's about to be bidded or about to start?
It's about to start, according to Mrs. Tremere.
Okay. And is there a start date?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ms. Valencia Cross.
Good evening, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor, and council members. My name is Valencia Cross, and I'm speaking also on behalf of the flooding. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of you looking into it, and that's our plea tonight. Even me recently, even the regular rain, you know, kind of frustrated me as well. I was trying to get to my son, who was home, and I couldn't get to him. The flooding was... I was coming down by Norcom, and I was... I went on to try to get to Effingham, and it was flooded so bad, it was like four, you know, four vehicles was already stalled and actually trapped, pretty much. They was in the water, not going anywhere. So, I was scared to go through the water.
Don't go through...
I circled back around and came down M Avenue and was trapped that way. I said, well, maybe I can go down south, you know, if I get back to the interstate and try to, you know... Or, you know, everywhere I went, I was blocked. I had to wait it out a couple of hours. Eventually, I was able to get through. So, my plea is, if you would, you know, continue, and I was pleased even in hearing the response even to Ms. Artis, even in looking into that, because it's not just our area, it's the whole city of Portsmouth, you know, with the flooding. But, you know, we're just speaking on the behalf of the citizens in that locality, but it's very important that, citywide, that we look at it, because it's really flooding everywhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Cross, I'll just let me differentiate, because what she's bringing up and that particular issue in that area is a major concern, and what you're talking about is something that's been happening for about 264 years in our city. We're just in that type of area because of our land and because of sea level rise and things of that. So, on any given day of a major storm with high tide and the floodgates positioned where they are, we're gonna have those experiences.
Yes.
So, I don't want you to think we're gonna leave out of here working on that issue, because that's one that we need the good Lord to help us with in quite a few other regions.
Yes, sir.
But this one was a different story, and that's... We'll bird dog this one here, and then we'll worry about those storms and those anomalies.
Now, the... Mine wasn't a storm, and when I was blocked, it was just regular rain. And I live on LaSalle as well, so I was trying to get home and couldn't. So, it was the surrounding areas of Prentice Park as well, of Prentice Place. So, I'm also speaking in reference to the same, but I know it's citywide as well, and I do understand you gotta take one step at a time in nature. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good night. Good job.
Our final speaker is Mr. Thomas Cross.
Good evening, council members. I'm just here in support of Ms. Artis and my wife and my mother concerning the flooding. I'm a servant, as you can see. It's a major concern. It's just the only thing that I'm confused about is what the statement that my mother made was, is why was the drains taken up? And why was it not in the plans? If they was taken up or closed off, why wasn't in the plans to put it back? Because if, you know, if it's already flooding, and we already in a place, an area, that's prone to flooding by, you know, natural causes, why would we hinder or deter, take away from stuff, the adequate stuff that was already in place, and then we just leave it at chance? Because we, I guess we was improving, but somehow it messed it up. So, that's... And I'm speaking on behalf, and just like my mother, she's been here for... She stated she's forty-five, been here forty-five years. And it's a number of elderly people that live in that community that we're speaking of, and I just... I'm concerned about them. I have small children. I'm concerned about them. We have a number of people in my area that owns multiple properties in that area, including my mother. So, I'm concerned about that, for the investment that they have in the community, in Portsmouth, in the city of Portsmouth. So, I'm just, you know, we... I just... More accountability. That's all I'm asking. We gotta be more accountable about what we doing for the city and what we doing for our constituent, our, you know, neighbors. So, that's all... That's my major concern.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Appreciate it. Good night, sir. Okay. Is there anything else to come before the body? Mr. Moody?
Yes, real quickly, Mayor, as you know, in fact, you cut the ribbon for the new fishing pier, and Vice Mayor was there, myself. But some questions have come up, and tried to answer them on Facebook, but maybe I can call on staff to answer it. Question is, do you need a fishing license?
No.
And do you need any other licenses to be able to fish on the pier? I know the answers, and I've tried to answer a few of them, but if we could do that publicly, Dr. Patton, that'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be great. Cut your mic off.
I provided for you information as it pertains to the... We are registered with the Virginia Fisherman Program or Identification Program. We've paid and have membership for the city. Citizens who are going to fish from the pier do not have to have a license. They do not have to purchase a license. But we are placing right at the base of the pier, the cards of which the Virginia Fisherman Identification Program asks persons who are fishing, fill out this form. It's gonna be a card that they can keep and have that card with them when they're on the pier. They do not have to buy a license. This should be affixed to the pier before the... In a little plastic container, which we are putting out a notice, and we've already informed you all before this weekend.
But they can also do that online, understand?
Yes, they can do it online.
And by telephone as well?
Yes, they can go online, and we'll get Mr. Pace to put out a Port City notice on this tomorrow.
Yeah, if we could post that on our website, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. Anything else we can add to body? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. Good night.